The Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement closes its meeting to order. It is now 1:00 PM on Tuesday, December 13, 2016. Present with us today is, to my love, Senator Dennis Rodriguez and Senator Tony Ada. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 379-33 introduced by Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and I'll have the sponsors speak briefly on their bills as it comes up. Bill Number 380-33 introduced by Senator Tina Munya Barnes and Bill Number 403-33 introduced by Senator Tony Ada. Notice of today's public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on December 5th and on December 7th, meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so for those who will be testifying, please ensure that you speak clearly into the mic. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 20th. Please address the testimony to Senator Tom Ada, and it can be dropped off to the mailbox to serve the legislature or email to office@senatorada.org. We'll go ahead and we'll end, thank you Senator Munya Barnes for joining us. So we'll start with the first bill, which is Bill 379-33. So Senator, if you could go ahead and briefly introduce the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Bill 379, what this attempts to do is consolidate about 5.2 acres of property on Marine Drive in Timouning across the John F. Kennedy High School. This is the property between the Shell gas station and the Guam Power Authority station that's there. Right now, DISIT has control, majority of that property. There's also a portion of the property that is under jurisdiction of the Tomorrowland Trust. And so what this bill attempts to do is consolidate these properties into one, and then it authorizes the Guam Economic Development Authority to kind of be the broker in soliciting for leases or to it to be developed, so that we can now construct the one-stop business center for DISIT, which DISIT had plans for many years now, which would include Guam's first autism center. And so the proceeds of this lease and this development would be used, number one, to build this center, but would also be used to pay GIDA fee based on the MOU that they have executed or will be executing with CLTC and DISIT. And also ensure that the portion that the CLTC has jurisdiction of, that they too receive proceeds from the use of that property. And so that's what this bill's about, and we look forward to working with stakeholders and seeing how we can move this forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So signing up for, to provide testimony is Dr. Vincent Duñez. Aubrey Duñez, are you going to be providing testimony, or just in favor? All right, thank you. Mr. Ben Servino. Tania Duñez, just signing up in support of the bill. And Mr. Mike Oram. You can provide testimony. So, Dr. Duñez, Ben Servino, and Mike Oram. I'm going to go ahead and exercise my prerogative to, although despite the Land Management Director having been the last one to sign in, he does have a commitment, yes, as a meeting to go to at Public Works, so I'm going to go ahead and ask him to give testimony first.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My name is Mike Oram, the Director of the Department of Land Management and the Administrative Director of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. On Bill Number 379-33, which as mentioned proposes to consolidate several lots in the municipality of Timouning under the administrative control of the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities and the Tomorrowland Trust Commission, it also intends to rezone the land to C commercial. I attached to my written testimony a copy of the Department of Land Management's Land Zoning Consideration Report, which provides the department's planning divisions, analysis, and recommendation, which I'm just pretty much summarizing today. In summary, basically we say, A, that really the correct zoning of the land is our one single residential dwelling, not agricultural, so that just needs to be corrected. And then what we'd like to have included within the language of the bill is something that would protect the interest of the Tomorrowland Trust Commission in this property should the proposed lease agreement lapse or default, and it probably is something we can work on if any kind of lease agreement that comes about this. Just while Tomorrowland Trust does have, has a very small interest in all of this, we just want to be able to ensure that it's, you know, the trust is also protected. And then we also saw that the need to rezone to C commercial was unnecessary because there was already prior land use authorization that allowed it to use the land as it saw fit for this purpose, and that information is more specifically discussed in the analysis within the Land Zoning Consideration Report. With those modifications, the Department of Land Management supports this bill, as we've outlined in our Land Zoning Consideration Report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Duñez?
Hi. My name's Dr. Vincent Duñez, and I am here in support of Bill 379-33. I am representing Hunter Speaks Organization, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our mission is to establish Guam's first comprehensive autism center. Autism and autism spectrum disorders are general terms used to describe a group of neurodevelopmental disorders that affect social interaction, verbal and verbal communication, as well as stereotypical repetitive behaviors. Most of these kids present with intellectual disability, odor impairment, as well as physical health issues such as sleep disturbance, gastrointestinal disturbance, and seizures. Coexisting psychiatric illness such as OCD, ADHD, and severe anxiety are often present. Autism affects 1 in 68 American children, that's 1 in 42 boys and 1 in 189 girls respectively. Autism is more common than pediatric AIDS, diabetes, and cancer combined. On Guam, over 260 kids have been identified in the Guam public school system as well as through Guam early intervention. That's ages 3 to 21, that does not include those younger or older, nor does it take into account those being homeschooled or in private school, or the countless others waiting to be evaluated. The, how is autism treated? The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Centers for Disease Control, as well as the New York State Health Department recommend a minimum of 25 to 40 hours of intensive behavioral intervention to treat this disorder. Our kids on Guam currently receive zero hours. With treatment, it is estimated that around 10% of these children make so much progress with intensive intervention that they no longer meet criteria for the diagnosis. Although results may vary, it is agreed by multiple studies that intensive behavioral intervention will help all children, no matter what. And it's a service that we think needs to be brought to the end, and something that we've been, been working towards doing through our nonprofit. Autism's been described since the 1940s by a physician named Leo Tanner, Johns Hopkins University. It's been almost eight decades in existence, and still we have no autism treatment here on island. And it is our mission at Hunter Speaks to, to, to improve the standard of care for autism treatment on Guam, so that our kids can be given the same opportunities and the same chance at a meaningful and productive life as everyone else in the mainland. And in supporting the center and bringing those services to Guam, I think that we'll be well able to do that. And so we support Senator Rodriguez and his effort and his bill.
Thank you, Dr. Duñez.
Thank you. Ben Sinofa Day, Senator Ada, members of the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement. For the record, my name is Ben S. Servino. I currently serve as the Director of the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, DISIT. I am submitting this written testimony in support of Bill 379-33 core, which authorizes the Guam Economic Development Authority to maximize and seek the highest and best use of the property, which is located across from JFK High School, on behalf of DISIT and the Tomorrowland Trust Commission. DISIT has administrative jurisdiction of lot number 5138-2-3-U-1-R2, which is about 11,168 square meters, and is located along Marine Drive. And we also have administrative jurisdiction on lot number 5138-2-R3-U-1-2, which is about 7,075 plus or minus square meters, and is located where the former Guam Rehabilitation and Workshop Center metal structure once stood. The Tomorrowland Trust Commission has administrative jurisdiction over the adjacent half-acre lot number 5138-2-R3-U-1-1, which is about 2,608 plus or minus square meters, and is located by the side road eastward where the concrete cars wash structure still stands. With the assistance of the Governor's Office and Department of Public Works, we're able to demolish and dispose of the old Guam Rehab Workshop Center structure that was abandoned and neglected for over 15 years. This structure was not only an eyesore, but a health and safety concern for the community because the leftover items from the truss shop became a fire hazard, and some homeless individuals were using the abandoned facility as their shelter. Back in 2008, DISIT developed a proposal for the construction of a two-story inclusion-for-all facility at the old Guam Rehab and Workshop Center location, to help address the concerns that were raised under the Department of Health and Substance Abuse and DISIT Permanent Injunction. The goal was to house the various DISIT programs and services, to use the facility to collaborate with certain community organizations involved in providing programs and services to individuals with disabilities and their families. This shovel-ready project has a completed architectural engineering plan comprised of a total area of 13,583 square feet, and was funded by the U.S. Department of Interior's Compact Assistance Grant, and was initially estimated to cost $6 million to construct. I've included an attachment in the back that shows a rendering of the facility and the floor plans. The two-story structure would include office space for DISIT's Division of Vocational Rehab, the Division of Support Services, an assistive technology computer resource and training center, and an enrichment center to promote independent living, and a space for an evaluation enforcement and compliance program unit to monitor and provide technical assistance regarding compliance with local and federal disability laws. The A and E design included a multi-breakout conference room, which could be utilized for meetings by various advisory councils and committees, for clients seeking employment, training, or micro enterprise activities, and for awareness presentations of various programs and services that are offered by community and faith-based service providers. The facility also provides space for talented individuals with disabilities with entrepreneurial interests who wish to showcase and sell their goods to tourists that often visit Kmart, and for island residents who wish to purchase handcrafted souvenirs to send back to the mainland. Working with GIDA to lease and develop the lots across from JFK, and to construct the DISIT Business Center and One-Stop Community Resource and Wellness Center would have many benefits, and the return of investment for our government is significant. DISIT has been leasing private office space in Agania to house the operations of its programs and services for over 15 years, and the annual savings of $3,000, I mean $364,344 realized from the existing lease could be reallocated towards the development of new program services, hiring more social workers, and paying for the utilities and maintenance costs of the new facility once it is constructed. The DISIT Business and One-Stop Resource Center could also serve as a transportation hub for Guam Regional Transit Authority, GRTA, whereby passengers can be dropped off to apply and receive vocational rehab services, and employment-related training from our community partners, and to also apply and receive support services from our agency. DISIT would be able to access $1 million of federal Transit Authority construction funding for the establishment of the One-Call, One-Click Dispatch Transportation Center through Clients from our DVR program could benefit from training and employment opportunities such as custodial or long maintenance services, including electrical and other administrative and programmatic support services at the proposed facility. Students from JFK High School could also benefit by providing service learning hours and serving as mentors or peer trainers for our clients in the new facility. Practical internship opportunities could be established in the new facility for students from UOG and GCC. Additional revenue could be generated for new DISIT programs and services through the installation of an electronic advertisement signage board funding Marine Drive. Employment agencies such as the Guam Department of Labor and the American Job Center could lease office space at the Business Center. Nonprofit organizations that serve people with disabilities could also lease space at the Business Center for the establishment of community-based programs such as an autism center. The cost to construct the DISIT Resource Center could be absorbed by the private developers part of their lease proposal. At the lease, at the end of the lease term, the Business Center facility can be transferred back to DISIT. A provision could be also included in the bill to allow DISIT to charge a fee for the use of the conference and training rooms for certain events. Nonprofit organizations that serve people with disabilities would be allowed to use the conference and training room for the organizational meetings and community outreach trainings at no charge. In closing, I would like to share that during cabinet meetings, the governor would often remind everyone that the success of a government is measured by the way they address the needs of the most vulnerable, which includes the early childhood population, the youth, the elderly, individuals with disabilities, and the veterans population in our community. Passage to Bill Number 379-33 would help to address our government's efforts of successfully meeting this measurement of success, and also be the legacy for our future generation, whereby people with disabilities would be provided an integrated venue to receive the skills, the training, and support that is needed to be gainfully employed, and to be independent contributing members of our society. Respectfully, Ben Servino.
Thank you very much. I also have here Ms. Lourdes Mesa, but you only, I guess you're going to provide written testimony and favor of the project, okay? I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions. Senator, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. If you have any questions, just want to thank you for, for being here. I know, just as we know, this is a project that you and the department have been working on for a very long time, and, you know, we're here now to take it to the finish line, and hopefully be able to use this public-private partnership concept to, to get this moving, because when you, one of the elements to move forward was just the resources, the government resources that weren't there to move forward, but now being able to work with GIDA, work with the private sector, now we can make this happen. And in, you know, in doing this, the opportunity of establishing this Guam's first autism center is real, with Dr. Duñez and the group, with the autism organization that we've been working with. We know that this is just the first step. Establishing the center is not going to address the problem of not having services here for our people, for our kids, but it's a first step. And so we know that the insurance, health insurance requirements, those factors need to be addressed, and, you know, we're committed to doing that, but hopefully we can get this pursued at this time. So thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Oram for the recommendations.
Senator Ada? I, Senator, I just have a question. You know, this autism center that you were describing, what's the, what kind of footprint does it have? Does it take up 25,000 square feet if you were to put a building in there, or?
Well, we looked, we looked at roughly 6,000 to 10,000 square feet. Our group has been touring autism centers in Hawaii, which we plan to mimic here on Guam. The last autism center we toured in Honolulu was around 10,000 square feet. They were servicing roughly 40 preschool-aged children, and I think that's, that's going to be a good start for us. I know that this one senator, this one center is not going to be able to meet the demands of our entire island, but again, it's a start, and...
So, so I guess maybe to Mr. Servino, my question would be, we're talking about consolidating two lots, or three lots, I guess it is, which totals 150,000 square feet, and you're going to put a 10,000-square-foot piece facility on there? Or is the idea here, because I noticed that the language here is that it also authorizes the Guam Economic Development Authority on behalf of DISIT to lease, to put the land out on a long-term lease for 30 years? So are we really, what are we really getting at here? The authorization to be able to lease out that property long-term, and then maybe use the proceeds from that, and, and either build or rent someplace else for this autism center?
The goal of the whole idea of establishing a home of our own for DISIT was actually to build our own structures. You see in the attachment, we have the A and E set already been established, and there are plans to use that facility, again, to comply with the mandates of the public law that established DISIT. The developers that we, providing proposals, once they've announced the proposal, requests for interest, requests for proposals that GIDA will be working on, would hopefully provide some leeway or information how they want to develop the property. The main goal, we want to ensure is that our structure is included in that proposal so that we meet our needs. Again, property's five acres in area, there's enough room there to, again, lease part of the property to nonprofit organizations such as the autism center. So if the developer decides to build the structure, maybe five, seven, 10 stories, whatever they propose, again, allocation of those spaces, those office spaces, or the spaces that will be required from some of the nonprofit organizations, not only the autism group, I know a number of other organizations will be interested in, in, again, securing space over there.
I, I have no problems with, you know, the effort to, to put up an autism center and all that. I'm certainly in full support of that. I just want to make sure that, that really the focus of this bill is that we are basically authorizing the long-term lease of this 150,000-square-foot piece of property on Marine Drive that's going to be leased out by GIDA. I mean, for all we know, we could see a hotel up there, and they're going to give you 10,000 square feet somewhere, right? But that, that's really what this bill does.
Again, you know, we have the A and E's, and we want to try to ensure that, again, our facility is incorporated in the proposals that are submitted and addresses our needs, because that's why we want, and if there are options that the investor or developer would propose that would probably identify another property that can build our structure, we are open to exploring that.
So there's, you're not, you're not married to the idea that the autism center has to be in this location along Marine Drive? So basically then, what it comes down to is that we have, we are, is that we are providing, this bill gives the authorization for a 30-year lease on that piece of property, for a developer to come in and build something on it, and that the proceeds from this all will go to DISIT, and a little bit to, to CLTC, correct?
Right.
Is there any kind of estimates of what kind of revenues this thing might generate?
I, I don't have that. Again, it will, again, we rely on the proposals that we submit, and once the GIDA announces, again, the request for bid or the request for interest, because there may be various types of proposals that may be submitted, to include, again, building our own structure in that facility, or providing an alternative property that they may have, so we, we need to explore that with the GIDA, and again, get the highest and best use for that property.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions. Okay, thank you. Mike, can you just hang on there? We've got another bill coming up. The next bill that's up for a hearing is Bill Number 380-33, introduced by Senator Tina Munya Barnes. Senator, if you can go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Mesa, you wanted to read your, your testimony? Okay, well, then let me, let me go back to that. You said you weren't going to give oral testimony. No problem, come on up.
Hey, good afternoon, Senator Ada, Senator Rodriguez, and our fellow senators. My name is Lourdes Anne Mesa, and I am a parent and a legal guardian of a young man with a developmental disability. I also hold the office of precedent for the autism community together, which is a support group for individuals with autism spectrum disorders and their families. I'm providing testimony today in support of Bill Number 379-33, which was introduced by Senator Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. to construct a new DISIT Business Center and One-Stop Community Resource and Wellness Center, and establishment of a Guam autism center. Almost 12 years ago, my son was diagnosed with having an autism spectrum disorder. It's a complex disorder of course of brain development that affected his ability to interact socially with others and difficulties with his verbal and nonverbal communication and repetitive behaviors. It's never easy for a parent to hear the news that you have a child with special needs, much less to have autism, and that your life as you know it will never be the same. The day we received this diagnosis was the day we began our journey of uncertainty, discovery, advocacy, and self-empowerment. For those of us living with autism, we understand the importance of early intervention and receiving the intensive services needed to meet each child's therapeutic needs. Unfortunately, services on Guam for those on the spectrum are either very limited, almost on assistance. Families like myself and parents, we struggle daily with the challenges of taking the best possible care for children. Families who are at the face of this decision, either to remain on island or go elsewhere to seek the services that desperately need for the children, we struggle with the question, are we doing the right thing if we remain behind? Many of our families are not able to just pack up and leave, either because of limited resources or lack of family support on island. Our families and children on Guam are hurting. The establishment of the Guam Autism Center can feel in the needs for children and families affected with autism spectrum disorders. We need to know that there are agencies that support individuals and persons with disabilities, such as the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities and the Division of... of Vocational Rehabilitation and are able to continue to provide services for our children who grow into adults. I'm here today to ask that you support Bill 37933 so that persons with disabilities will be able to get the quality services they need to better their lives and their lives of their families. Thank you for your valuable time and consideration. Sincerely.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mesa. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, go ahead then and proceed with Bill 380. And I have signed up Mr. James Atkins, Ms. Mary Ann Ruiz, and Mr. Mike Borja. Please step forward. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Senator Barnes, please introduce the bill.
Mr. Chairman, Bill 383-33COR is an active rezon lot 2168, municipality of Baragada from agriculture A-zone to light industrial M1. This lot, Mr. Chair, is located adjacent to a road across the Baragada Station and Fire Station and the family wants and desires to maximize the over 22.4 acres, if I'm not mistaken, to its highest potential. We know that in Public Law 31-198, all the federal excess lands were returned to the original landowners and at that time, there was a bill that designated all those returned lands to agriculture zone. And we, like many other TEES and properties and ones that we've worked closely in the past, we know that those purposes were used other than agricultural. So, the family has asked if we could visit this lot and give it its zoning from agriculture to light industrial. And I just want to say, Mr. Chair, that, that the area that we're looking at, the surrounding areas around that area adjacent to that, we have, and this August body has worked in the past and has given it both commercial and land management.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and defer first to Mr. Borja, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Senators. Again, my name is Mike Borja, the Department of Land Management Director. On Bill Number 380, which proposes a zone change to M1 Light Industrial, a 22-acre federal excess returned land, which is adjacent to Route 8 across from Baragada Fire Station. Land Management's Land Zoning Consideration Report, which we submitted and is attached to this letter, provides our analysis and recommendation. In summary, our recommendation is that the south portion of the lot, that portion which is adjacent to Route 8, be zoned as C Commercial, with the majority of the lot north of that portion be zoned as M1 Industrial. This recommendation was discussed with the owner of the land. Primarily, this recommendation is to maintain consistency already established throughout many of Guam's major roadways where a buffer either side of the highway center line is eligible for C Commercial zoning. While most of the uses of a C Commercial zone are permitted in an M1 Light Industrial zone, the reverse is not true. The Department's Planning Division considers that build-out on this lot should be consistent with its surrounding community. Certain types of uses allowed in an M1 zone along a major road and across from a predominantly residential village and the village center would not be consistent with existing uses. The Department of Land Management will support a modified form of this bill that incorporates the recommendation that we've outlined in our Land Zoning Consideration Report.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Atkins?
Good afternoon, Senator Ada and Senators. I'd like to thank you for having the ear in this bill. The lot that we are talking about in the 380 is a lot that came back from TEES and it is a lot that we've, our family has purchased in order to move East West General Center from where it is today into a new location because our lot that we have now is too small and we'd like to develop more into that area. We would put East West General there and also other businesses that would be good for that particular area. As I've talked, too many people and other people think that it's good for that area because, one, the mayor says she would like to have more businesses there, to bring in more into Baragada and other areas around. So, I would like to just say I support the land management's of what Mike has said here and I think I can agree with everything he says, but thank you.
Sirus?
Thank you. Senators, Senator Ada, committee, my name is Mary Ann Ruiz, I'm a resident of Orde, and I'm testifying today for the administrator of the estate of Jose Antonio Yelios, Algebios, Helen Jones, sitting right behind me, and the heirs of that estate. We are TEES and neighbors of the owner of the above property subject to this rezoning bill. In fact, my father-in-law bought it from your former... Yes. Our 21,000 square meter lot, 2169 New Dash One, brought us right onto the lot in question to be rezoned. We are testifying neither for or against the above rezoning bill. We wish the owner of this rezoning request all the good fortune and luck to get what he desires. However, we desire the same. Rezoning, that is, of Lot 2169 New One, from A zoning to M1, but in light of existing and confusing regulatory and past and recent legislative actions, have been extremely hampered to get our rezoning desires to this chamber. Our questions are the following. Did the owner of Lot 2168 go through the horrors of applying for rezoning through the ARC, getting the okay required for rezoning from the EPA, Department of Agriculture, Guam Water Works Authority, Guam Power Authority, Department of Parks and Recreation, Department of Public Works? And Bureau of Statistics and Planning is mandated by Bill 365-33 enacted just recently, December 2nd. If this is the type of rezoning that did not require to jump through these regulatory hoops, he is extremely lucky in light of the hardships that this ARC presents for TEES and owners. And we request that we may write on his bill and request that our property be placed also on rezoning Bill 380-33. Did the owner's application have to be heard and accepted by hearing of the municipal council of the village of Baragada? If his rezoning request does not require this action, just recently made into law with Bill 36533 on December 2nd, he again is a lucky owner. And again, we want to be equally happy and request that we may write on his bill and request that our property will be placed on rezoning Bill 380-33. The possible ensuing argument, one lot per bill, is not credible in light of two lots being rezoned on Bill 332-33 enacted into law September 26th with Public Law 33189. To save time and effort of all concern, especially since we are all aware that none of TEES can be used as agriculture or residential and turned over by the military as industrial only, we request that our TEES lot, 2169 Dash One, a dash, I mean New Dash One, be placed on this Bill 38033 and together with Lot 2168 be converted to M1 zoning and passed into law. And we all be happy. Thank you.
I was going to say, did you homework?
I always do my homework.
Mr. Borja, would you care to comment? I don't want to turn this into a debate, but if you care to comment on any of the, I'm, actually, I'm kind of surprised with the position that land management has taken in, basically in support, given, you know, provided certain changes are made, but usually land management has been adamant that these things go through the Land Use Commission.
Right. And, but in this case, what Mrs. Ruiz mentioned is pretty, pretty close to that. I mean, we've explained that what we want to see is the land to be used as it is in its surrounding areas. Like, for example, the areas closer to the housing that wanted to become M1, we said, well, it's housing that's predominantly there, always been there, it should stick to some form of housing as high as R2 possibly. But in this case, after discussing the matter with Mr. Atkins, we, we, we got to an agreement where we wanted, again, to have consistency with the land use in the surrounding area and that the frontage of Route 8 should be no more than commercial. Now, in all the endeavors he's going to have to endure to get his building permits and other actions, he's going to face the same, the same group of people that's, that's mentioned by Mrs. Ruiz in the Application Review Committee. And, you know, if there was going to be a need to rezone, the problem is there hasn't been really a real master plan done for TEES at all. And, and perhaps if there was a full master plan that was done for the entire area, especially that industrial side of TEES, then we could, you know, we could work with that and then you could go through this, this whole process where we would then can have a, you know, the process of other reviewers looking into this. So, that would be a better, better aspect of it. But everything's been pieced in already, but as Mrs. Ruiz mentioned, I mean, what we foresee in that whole area, because it's already been pretty much an industrial area in use, that it most likely will probably continue to evolve into that. We just didn't want to see it fronting the highway.
Just the, is the Land Zoning Consideration Report adequately, is an adequate substitute for the ARC findings?
Well, the process of the Land Zoning Consideration Report is to, we only issue it out when there's legislative action requesting zoning changes and we try within a very limited amount of time. We poll all the members of the Application Review Committee and then by the deadline, whatever is provided is what we present. It's not one of those things where they, they're even meaning to talk about, but we send out the information to them requesting their input. If there was an input added there to my zoning report, then that's what we've received as of, as of that period of time. What we can do within our own department, like we did in this case, as an example time, was provide you the names of all the, all the landowners within a 500-foot radius. And in this case, one of the considerations was the fact that, you know, right pretty much across the street, even though it's not fronting Route 8, is the, is the church, Baragada's church. And, you know, so there's some activities that, that we want to kind of make sure that, you know, there's, well, as I mentioned to Mr. Atkins, the issue of an M1 use along, along the highway would be something like a car, a car, a place that can paint cars. We didn't want to see an auto paint shop right there along the highway. You know, maybe perhaps restaurants and stores would be more appropriate, but not, not some of the heavier industrial things that are permitted under M1. Further on in, that's a different story. Now, you know, you've got all these mixes, that's the reason why we have to look at some kind of master plan, because you now have a lot of schools back there and, you know, there's got to be some, some monitoring of what we can do even because of those schools. There's a perimeter around a school that certain activities are prohibited. So, those are the kinds of considerations that will become very apparent when they try to get a license to do something here. They may not be getting it now in that kind of review from the Application Review Committee, but they'll get it when they're going in for their building permit, the most definitely business license.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? None? All right. Do you have any comments?
I have another question.
Ms. Lynn?
You know, with, actually, my question is with Mr. Borja.
So directed to the chair.
Or to you, yeah. If I'm going to have to go through all this for my family, why would I have to go and put a four-by-eight sign in the middle of the jungle? That costs me $500, that sign. Nobody sees it. I mean, you know, there are certain things in this packet that are just hardships on the owner. If there was something a little simpler, when it doesn't contain to, I mean, refer to a, a property that's right on the road, as you said, Mr. Borja, we're way back here. We're here. They're down here on the road. We're back right here. So, that's M1. That's just in the jungle. So, I would say maybe you can go and find out something that we can make a little simpler for those people that are in the middle of the jungle somewhere and they know that this has never been an A1? Well, yeah, breadbasket, that's right. It was the breadbasket before the war, but it was not turned over as such. It's supposed to be M1. So, it just makes it really expensive and really a lot of runaround for nothing to go and, you know, this is an extension of his lot right above. We bought it from the owner of the, the owner before. So, put it on the bill, save yourself some time. Yeah. I mean, you know, it's so simple. And besides, our judge will be happy, we can close our 30-year probate, besides, it makes no difference and the state administrator can do whatever she wants to do with the property. She always asks us what she wants, what she needs to do. So, save yourself some time. It's easy.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Yeah. It's easy. Don't let me run around. I have better things to do. I want to go to Italy.
Okay. So, with that then, we'll consider Bill 380.
Thank you, Senators.
Have been duly heard. Thank you very much.
Hágamos.
Now, the, for the final bill. Thank you very much, Mr. Atkins. Bill Number 403-33 introduced by Senator Ada. Senator Ada, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill 403-33, all it does is remove the requirement to have a manufacturer-approved repair shop certify the repaired salvage vehicles. And since the enactment of the salvage title laws, many buyers of these vehicles found that manufacturer-recognized shops have been unwilling to inspect and certify the vehicles that have been repaired. Thus, making it difficult for the owners of these vehicles to have them registered and used for themselves. So, I just hope that we'll be able to get this onto the agenda for our December session and that way, these vehicles can be used to their family, those that have purchased it what they needed for. Thank you.
All right. Since there's no, nobody signing up for Bill 403, we'll consider Bill 403 as having been duly heard and... 379, 380, and 403 have not been duly heard. So, with that, this public hearing is complete. It is now 1:50 and this meeting is adjourned.